All right. Well, we'll get a few more, hopefully some more people will be showing up. Before we get started, I'll just take a moment to introduce myself. My name's Bill Smythe. I'm with Fiscal Conservatives of Hamilton County PAC. We put this forum on for the HSE School Board Candidates. We did one earlier this year for the GOP Sheriff Candidates. And last year, we did one for District 20 Caucus to replace Luke Kelly. So this is our third effort. This is the first one with John. We have been using Abdul beforehand, but he was getting pricey. So John's in tonight. John's just cheap, that's why he's here. So we printed these little handouts that we left on every chair. And the important part of those was to help you identify which district that you're in, so that you'll know which candidates should achieve your greatest focus. Because when you start voting, you're only going to be able to vote for one of them per district, okay? So that's why we separated them out to help everybody out. So if you didn't know, this would be the best way. We also would like, if you would be so kind, is at the end of the event, if you would click technically the one in your district, but if you chose to vote for one in each district, we'll be fine with that. And then drop it in the ballot box over there, we'd appreciate it. If you put your email address on it, we'll be happy to send you the results. So that's totally voluntary as to, am I echoing? Okay, well, since, one other suggestion I always remind everybody, because I need to do it myself, is turn your phones off. Because I always forget that. And then I'm the one that's ringing, and I'm like, damn, Bill. So the other thing is, we are endorsing several candidates for the upcoming election in the township boards that are also within the HSE school district. We have one of them here tonight, Brent Hyday, is in Wayne Township, in stand-up, where you're at, over there. So if you're in Wayne Township, please vote for him for the township board. He has our endorsement. Greg DeWalt is the endorsed candidate in Fall Creek. And my partner in crime, David Giffel, is the endorsed candidate in Delaware Township. Now, you can vote up to three candidates for township board, but those are the three that we are endorsing, okay? Tonight's sponsors, in addition to June Lee's Music Academy, we have Tom Britt here with Townpost TV. Our county counselor for our district, Amy Massimalomani Howell, is also a sponsor. And of course, John and Citizens Bank. So quickly tonight, what we're going to do, hopefully we'll get a few more people, but what we're going to do is, candidates are going to get 90 seconds to introduce themselves, tell you all the great reasons why they're here, why you should vote for them, I'm sure that's why. And then we will be randomly selecting questions. John has done his homework, as you might imagine, and he has 19 questions prepared. We are going to ask a question for each group. Only that group is going to get that question, and we'll move on to a separate question for the next group. We don't really want to bore you to death with one person, 10 people answering the same question, because who cares? So they'll have 90 seconds to answer those. And then at the end, we'll have an option. They could choose another question, or answer one that they didn't get that they want to, and then they'll do their close. Doug up here is going to be our timekeeper. He's got a little flag when he gets to 30 seconds. That's kind of a key to, you see it, I'll get out of the way, but that's kind of the key to, you know, bringing home. And so I'm going to pass this off to John at this point. I thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, Bill, and welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out to become more informed in the critical upcoming school board elections. I have some colleagues from the board here this evening. I'd like to recognize, if you'd all please stand up, and everyone, go ahead, stand up. Mike, so in the back, we have Mike Bodorf, give a little wave, Amanda Shira, Sylvia Shepler, our president, Matt Burkey. I know a lot of you have questions for the future board, and a few of you might have questions for the current board, so they'd love to chat tonight. And I think, yes. Not, no questions for me. And thank you, Bill. Again, the format, we're going to choose the questions. And Ms. Chandler's here, I respect very much, so I'm honored to be the host. Abdul's too expensive, Larry's out of town, and Ms. Chandler's already done one, so I figure if I'm in the top four, you know, we'll take it. And bear with me, it's the first time I've done it. Also, I know Rich Block from the city council is here. Thank you, Rich, for taking the time to join us. Okay, with that said, we're going to start with the 90-second introductions, and we'll start with Brad Boyer from District 1.
I turned it off. I'll turn back. Good evening, and thank you for having us here. I am Brad Boyer, and I'm running for the school board in District 1. I've been inspired to run for the school board for several reasons. And probably those reasons haven't changed, even though I've met probably 2,000 people in my district as I've walked from house to house to house, talking to folks. So I kind of joke that I don't know that I'm running for the school board, but I am doing a lot of walking for the school board. So I'm inspired by all the people who have helped me along the way. I'm inspired by the teachers that I've had, I've been inspired by my parents, I've been inspired by other educators that have poured into me along the way. And I want to take this opportunity and pay it forward. And so therefore, I am, I'm running for the school board. I believe that we can do more for our students. I believe that we can do more for our teachers. I believe that we can do more for our parents. And I believe that we can do more for our community by elevating the school and the school corporation within our community. I want to improve our schools. I believe that this starts with the school board and its leadership. I feel that in order for us to be great in the classroom, for us to be graduating top students from our program, that we need to have a strong school board. Excellence will come from within. I think that we need to probably define, maybe even redefine in some cases, what education is, so that we understand that it's not just the formal education they get in the classroom, but it's education that comes from the classroom, comes from the parents, comes from the community. I want to cast a bold vision. I want to set goals. I want to monitor performance. I want to measure results. And then I want to hold our people accountable. I believe that I can help do this. I believe that I can make a difference. For that reason, I am running for the school board, and I ask for your support on November 6th. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Mr. Ellsbury?
Thank you. And I thank both of you and everybody here for your support and holding us this evening. So thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Benjamin Ellsbury. I am running for Hamilton Southeastern School Board, District 1. Why you must be thinking, is he crazy? Is he up for a challenge? It's really a little bit of both of, it's really a calling. I was asked to, to really think about what kind of community service can I really do for the community. And this happened to come across in a time of my life where we have a daughter that's grown out of Fishers High School. We've lived here for the last 16 years, and I'm at a point in my life, and my wife's at a point in her life, where we can spend more time doing more community service. And that's really what this is. We feel that the community has given so much to us, that it's our time to give that back. Let me tell you a little bit about myself and my family. We, like I said, we've been here for the last 16 years. Been, I work in Fishers, been working in Fishers for the last 12 years. My wife is a teacher. And I come to this with a non-biased approach. I don't have a way, rhyme or reason as to why I'm doing this because I'm mad at something. I'm doing this because I want something in return. I'm doing this just because I generally feel that I can do better to help support the community. I want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate your support and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsbury. Mr. Josh Richardson?
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you to the Fiscal Conservatives of Hamilton County for hosting the event, and the event sponsors. So my name is Josh Richardson, and I am the product of public education. My mom and dad were both high school teachers, my dad for more than 40 years. I'm married to a high school teacher, and I attended public schools. Graduated from Ball State University, where I studied economics and telecommunications, and then the IU McKinney School of Law. I've got two children that are in the Hamilton Southeastern School District now. I'm running because I believe that strong schools are the key to strong communities. And our district was one that didn't have candidates until near the end. It wasn't something I had long aspired to do. But as the date drew closer for filing, and there were no entries, I really did feel compelled for such an important board to be a part of it. So I joined, and then had two really fantastic opponents that joined as well. So I'm excited about that. I believe that I'm somewhat of a unique candidate, in that I have worked in government for a while. I've crafted policy, I've implemented policy, advocated for legislative change, managed budgets at the state level, and so I've done all of that. Yet I'm running this campaign more on an approach than on a policy agenda. I have a lot to learn about education, plan to learn from the constituents that I serve and the staff that works for us. I'm really excited about the opportunity to do that. I do believe that it's important that we look at budget when we do this, that we look at return on investment for the taxpayer as part of it. And so I'm glad to be here with the Fiscal Conservatives of Hamilton County tonight, and look forward to raise in the future.
Thank you, Josh. And now we'll go to District 2, Matt Multer.
Good evening. My name is Matt Multer, and I've been a Fishers resident for over 14 years. And I'm married to Emily in the second, third row there, who's also a teacher. We have three young boys, ages eight, five, and one. And if we look a little anxious tonight, it's not the crowd, it's because we're worried the boys are going to tell the babysitter they're allowed to do something they're not normally allowed to do. My background, after getting my master's in informatics at IU, instead of joining the military after 9/11, I thought I'd serve my country by becoming a police officer. And I was a police officer for over 10 years. And after 10 years, I left the police force, but still felt, still felt I wanted to give back to my community. So I created two software companies now, out of Launch Fishers, right down the road a little bit, that actually help public safety organizations, like government entities, do more with less, be more efficient and more effective with their resources. I'm running because I think our public schools can be a little better. In a community as strong as ours, with the resources we have, we should expect a little more from our schools. And we have a unique opportunity in this election to raise the bar going forward. One that sets a solid framework for the next 15 or 20 years, when my youngest, a one-year-old, is going to be in high school. To do that, it's going to take people with different backgrounds, different experiences, and innovative ideas. And I believe I have that experience to work together, to take our district from good to great.
Thank you, Matt. Janet Pritchett?
Hello, my name is Janet Pritchett. And my husband, Mike, and I have been married for 17 years, and we've lived here in Fishers for 14. We have four amazing children. We have, that all go to school here in our district. And I work for a Herff Jones representative as a client manager. And so, but by night, I, you'll find me oftentimes at one of our schools. I've been volunteering in the classroom for 12 years, since my oldest, who is now a junior at Fishers High School, was in kindergarten. I volunteered in every single one of their classrooms while they were in elementary school. Mostly because, in the very beginning, it was because I just wanted to see who their friends were, I wanted to see how they interacted with the teachers. And then, as I continued to do so, realized that teachers did rely on someone to come in and help with maybe pulling a small group. And so those are, that's, that's where I became interested in public education. And it grew into a passion. I've been volunteering with the PTO, I'm still part of the PTO. And so for those reasons, and next natural step is school board to me. I feel like I have a good grasp on what's going on currently in our schools. I have, I talk to lots of parents on a daily basis. So I think that having that parental representation is important. And so I'd be honored to serve on the school board.
Thank you, Janet. And Mr. Frank Whalen?
Thank you, Mr. Delusha, for moderating the event tonight. And thank you to Mr. Multer and Mrs. Pritchett for putting yourselves out there and engaging in an ongoing dialogue about school board. I am so excited to be here tonight. My name is Frank Whalen, and I'm running for HSE School Board in District 2. By trade, I'm a commercial banker, working for a local community bank. My amazing wife, Kathy, and I have raised three wonderful children, who have successfully gone through or are going through the HSE school system over our 23 years here in Fishers. I have an easy way for everyone to remember the four keys to my star vision for HSE schools. That is, S, Students in Safety First; T, Teaching and Learning Creatively; A, Accountability and Transparency; and R, Retaining and Attracting the Best Staff for the District. I think we can all agree that we have great schools and amazing teachers. And I think we can also all agree that we want to see the system go from great to even better than great. Using my fresh perspective, new ideas, financial background, leadership experience, and most importantly, my experience as an engaged HSE parent, I'm prepared to help lead HSE to reach its goal by working hard to create and execute the vision of the community and the school board. Once again, my name is Frank Whalen. Thank you for having me here, and I'm excited for the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Frank, and everyone from District 2. So we are guaranteed one thing in this election, an upgrade in District 2. Now, a little, I couldn't resist, a little change in the playbook. We're going to, just a little out of sync. So Mrs. Michelle Fullheart is a candidate in District 3. Her father is having surgery in Fort Wayne, so she's not able to join us. So we're going to do District 4. And then we've got Mrs. Reardon McSully is the other District 3 candidate, but just in, since we're sitting in that order. So, Mr. Banks?
My name's Brad Banks, and I'm running for school board in District 4. I'll start out by acknowledging it is my daughter's 10th birthday today, so I'm going to say happy birthday to my daughter. We did not dare bring her here on her birthday. I'm a lifelong Indiana resident. I graduated from Purdue University in undergrad. I went to Valparaiso University for law school. My wife and I decided to make Fishers home. We've lived here for over 15 years. All 15 years, we've resided in the 4th District of the HSE school. We have two kids that attend HSE schools. I've got two nephews and a niece who attend HSE schools. And I've got two cousins who also live in 4th District, who kids will be attending HSE schools. In addition to that, I have a father who lives in 4th District half the year, so I get the, the older perspective of the 4th District living, living there as well. I spent 10 years as a prosecutor. I now own my own law firm, and have done that for the past six years. I'm an active community volunteer, including being involved in Big Brothers, Big Sisters for eight years, Prevail, the Hamilton County High School Mock Trial Team. And I think my passion and desire to help children will be what guides me as I'm elected as a school board member in District 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. And then Julie Chambers?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, everybody, so much for being here. I'm Julie Chambers, I'm running for school board in District 4. One of the main reasons that I decided to run last year was because I really felt like the board needed some new perspectives, new ideas. And one of those ideas that I really think is important, that I hope to bring, is more accountability and transparency. I think it's important that our board listens to our community, our teachers, and our parents, and takes that feedback to heart. And I think we need new people that will really focus on those issues. Some of the other issues that I'd like to focus on are increasing diversity in our teaching staff and our, staff within our district, so that our kids are represented, and they see that represented in their teachers. I'm excited to work with the city to expand the curiosity program. I think that's a great opportunity to expand our apprenticeship and mentorship programs in the community, to reach those kids that are not only preparing for college, but kids that are preparing to go into the workforce, so that we're not leaving any of those kids behind. A little bit about me, I've been in Indiana for about 10 years. We have two kids. Emily is in first grade at Fall Creek, and Morgan's in preschool, so may or may not be in kindergarten next year. She's an August baby, so we'll have to play that by, by ear. I was also a prosecutor in Marion County. I left there in 2012 to also start my own law practice, though my opponent and I have pretty similar work backgrounds, at least. So I'm excited to be running. I've never run for anything before, and I'm excited to be here with everybody here to talk about some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. So that's District 4. And then again, Michelle Fullheart, not able to be here from District 3. But Jennifer Reardon McSully, Mrs. Reardon McSully, please.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Reardon McSully, and I'm excited to be running for District 3 for the HSE school board. I'm here tonight because I have a deep passion for our students in our community, and because I want to make a difference in our Fishers community here. As you know, this school year's board election will be pivotal for the future of our schools and also our community. Our Hamilton Southeastern school system has provided a foundation of excellence in the Fisher, in Fishers for many years. I'm interested in moving that progress forward, as our district works through some very important growing pains, because we're getting big. A little bit about me, my husband Jake and I have lived here in Fishers for 12 years. We have two boys, Jason Jackson, in first grade and third grade, and they're both go to Brook School Elementary. I'm actively involved in the schools as a room parent, PTO, and the youth mentoring initiative for YMI. I am always seeking to help make a difference, one kid at a time. Professionally, I've been the senior director of Eventually in Childcare here in Fishers for almost 10 years. I have the opportunity to lead a staff of 40 full-time teachers and three administrators. Each year, I build, implement, and manage a multimillion-dollar budget. I understand on a very professional level the importance of fiscal responsibility. I have almost 20 years of leadership experiment, experience in childhood education, and I have my master's in early childhood education. So I'm very excited to be here today, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reardon McSully. So that was District 3. And then now we'll have each district draw, yeah? If just one of you draw, we're going to have three and four go together, just for a little balance.
Number 14.
Number 14.
Just pick the easy one.
Okay, so this will be for District 4 and District 3. HSE schools is currently going through K-8 redistricting. What are your thoughts on the current high school boundaries? What do you think should be done regarding the high school boundaries, and who goes to which high school?
Well, redistricting is a very passionate subject for all of us, and it's very hard for our students to be shuffled around every year. It's, it's difficult to be a teenager, and it's difficult to change the school you go to. Now, that being said, the board has a very hard decision to make when it comes to redistricting, and it's not an easy situation to go through. With that in mind, I believe that there's an answer for this going forward, when it comes to funneling our kids into schools, that they can stay at once they're there. It would be nice to figure that out. And being on the board, that would be one of my great passions, is to figure out, once a kid is placed in a school, that they stay there throughout their entire time in, in their school system. Also, I believe that it should be the way that we, that we're doing it currently, and the way that they're asking for input by the parents and the community on what they believe is right for their students. And to take the, where you live, and the closest school that you live to, I do like that as well. But we do have to take our students in consideration when it comes to, once they're placed, they should probably stay there, and we can figure that out going forward.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Reardon McSully. Ms. Chambers?
Just go down the row. So my perspective, obviously I have young kids, so I haven't had to deal with the high schools. But having talked to parents, teachers, other administrators in the district, I think it'll be important to have clear boundaries for the two schools, so that people in the district know, from wherever they, they're living, this, this should be their home school. But I do think it's still important to keep options open for those kids that need it, either because of issues they're dealing with within the school, between other students, or behavioral issues that are happening in that school, or because of opportunities that they may have at one of the other schools, based on athletics or academics. However, I think keeping that option open, it's important to make sure that families and students minimize moving back and forth between those schools year to year, so that the district can keep those numbers accurate. We know what the numbers should be year to year, so that we can keep the, the numbers as close as possible. I know Fishers right now is a bit higher in enrollment than HSE, and trying to even that out a bit more, so that resources are shared equally between those schools. And one school doesn't have any sort of advantage, because every, every student in our district needs to succeed, and we make sure that every student has the resources they need at whatever school they end up at.
Thank you, Brad.
The question was about redistricting in, in high schools. That's a particular challenging topic to tackle, because we have essentially three and a half junior highs. So you've got Sand Creek, Fall Creek, and Fishers, and then you've got the HIH, which is only half the size of the other junior highs. So funneling students all to the same, from the same school to the same high school's a challenge, because you would have, one of the two junior highs is only providing half as many students. So that, that makes it a challenge. I think do, creating clear boundaries, trying to make it where it's going to incorporate the future growth when we do tackle that issue. And then, as much as possible, continue to allow the school choice at the, at the high school level, for the specialized programs they have at Fishers, and for other issues that may be important to the students, is, as much as possible, something we should continue to try to do.
All right. Thank you very much, Brad. So the rest of you dodged the first R. There's still another R lurking out there, though, Frank. Number 3.
Big money.
Okay, number 3, and then we'll just go in order, Frank, Janet, Matt. Effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction, and define clear goals towards that vision. What steps would you take to ensure the HSE school board embodies this characteristic?
Okay, so, can you repeat the question?
Sure, of course. And I know, and it is a long one. Effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction, and define clear goals towards that vision. What steps would you take to ensure the HSE school board embodies this characteristic?
Okay, so, as a school board, the role of a school board member is to provide oversight with advocacy. And that oversight with advocacy would play a part in what you're talking about here, as far as a vision and, and a, for, for teachers being effective in their teaching methods and reaching, reaching goals. So as far as a board member goes, we have to make sure that we're both trustees and delegates. We are trustee, meaning we, we help make decisions on our own, based on our experiences. But we're also a delegate, because we have constituents, so we need to make sure we're responding to them. We have to listen to, to people, and make sure that we are embodying what, and passing on that information. And we have to create a consensus to make sure we're serving all. So any visions and any, any goals would have to be, take, take the commitment to serve all, and we would have to make sure we're listening to all of our constituents to form those goals, and set clear guidelines that are measurable, both with the superintendents and the teachers. The teachers have a great new program, as far as their, their annual reviews, and we need to be a key part of that.
Thank you, Frank. Janet? And I'm happy to read it again. I know it's, of course. No, it's okay. Effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction, and define clear goals toward that vision. What steps would you take to ensure the HSE school board embodies this characteristic? Basically having the vision of high expectations for student achievement, quality instruction, and then kind of clear goals towards them.
Okay. I think one big thing is, you know, we need a standard to measure students by, we do that by standardized testing. I think that that is important. It's for, it helps us with get state funding, it helps us measure where we are. But I don't know that we've, we've got our finger on the best method yet. We have a new test coming out, ILEARN. I've looked through some of the questions and how it's administered, and I, I think it, it looks, it looks good. But- looks, it looks good, but, you know, there again, that there's going to be some learning curve with that, and I'm not sure that it's 100% the best thing, but, you know, we'll try it. I'd like to see a standardized test be a little bit shorter in length. I think we can still, we can gain a lot of information about a child from a standardized test with less questions, which would alleviate teachers having to spend time teaching to that test, preparing students for that test, and so, and then that would tie in for me with teachers is we need to, as a board, seek and retain great talent. So, we need to be making sure that the talent we do have is nourished and stays where they are here in our district, and we need to, we need to seek out some great teachers and some, also some diversity within our teachers, and make that a priority.
Thank you, Janet. Matt Multer?
John, I understand the heart of the question. It's how are we going to come together for a vision and work together?
Yep, high expectations for student achievement, quality instruction, and then define clear goals towards that vision. And I did actually shorten the question.
Well, it's an interesting point, right? Because the beauty of having diversity on the board is what you can achieve when all of that diversity works together. For example, you look, you look at our past guys like Steve Jobs and Wozniak, they're complete opposites, but look what they're able to build, right? Steve Ballmer and Bill Gates, complete opposites, but by working together, putting aside their differences, they're able to achieve and create these great, amazing companies that have gone on to, you know, helped so many people. And I think the board can be similar, right? The more diverse our opinions, the more diverse backgrounds that we bring together, diverse ideas, when we come together and we listen to each other and we iterate on our ideas and, you know, come together in that way, we produce a better product. So, the goals, the vision, the measurables, by joining all those diverse opinions will be better for our district. Because there's a lot, you know, our district is made up of a lot of different kinds of people, from different kinds of backgrounds. So, a couple of the things that I would like to do to help unify that diversity, obviously, is listening to each other. Before we make any decision, not having preconceived notions about what the answer is, letting the data lead us towards the correct decision. Also, learning about each other, just assuming we know everything about the other person is not, is not the best way to approach it, you know, understanding that I have a lot to learn from you, just like you have a lot to learn from me. So, those are the ways I would go about it.
Thank you, Matt. And now, District One.
We got lucky 13.
All right, 13. Okay, HSE Schools employs over 2,400 people. What are your thoughts on how to attract and retain top educators? What role, if any, do you see yourself playing if elected to the school board?
Yeah, elected and attracting, I think that's, I think it is an important part of the school board. Obviously, you know, I've said before, I think that the most important part of a child's educational experience are the teachers and the instructors that they work with in the classroom, and so obviously finding quality people to fill those roles is going to be key to successful outcomes in the schools. You know, we have a distinct advantage in that we're in an area of the state that's exciting to be in, a place that's growing, a place where people are moving, you know, even without employment, looking for something to do. And so I think it's an important part of this. You know, at the end of the day, you know, I'm a person who believes in the simple laws of supply and demand, and I think we have to make sure that we're putting together a package, including the quality of life in the community, that makes people want to live and learn and teach here. And so I think that it's a very important role of the board. I think that you, you know, again, you lean on your administration to set the tone for creating the kind of environment that teachers want to work in. You hope that you can continue to support a community that people want to live in, and then, you know, ultimately, the third part of that is making sure that you're putting together a package that people see as a career and as a place where they want to further themselves. And so I think all of those are important. Also, pathways for teachers are important, the opportunity to advance in their own career and the opportunity to advance as a teacher and as an instructor through learning opportunities. So, I hope that the board would take an active role in that, and certainly I would plan on playing an active role in that.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Ellsbury?
Can you go ahead and repeat the question again?
Yep. HSE Schools employs over 2,400 people. What are your thoughts on how to attract and retain top educational talent? What role, if any, do you see yourself playing if elected to the school board?
This will start with building partnerships. The school board needs to have a great founding partnership with not only the teachers and staff, but with the administrators as well, and work together for one goal. One goal meaning that we go to legislation, help with the funding with our schools, and be able to help support our teachers more. I do feel that with our teachers, their quality of life is really what I'm going towards with this candidacy. The quality of life for teachers, if we can give them access to, you know, school supplies, even though we live in a, in what's considered a nice, you know, rich environment, some of our teachers do struggle with purchasing school supplies and be able to support them better with that. I will tell you, with the quality of life for the teachers, it's going to make for a happier environment with the students' learning ability. If you have a teacher that wants to come to our school and want to live here, raise their family here, then they are going to have a better performance teaching our students. And with teaching our students, our students are going to get a better education for that. I will tell you the last piece, sorry. The trades program, we have a lot of students that come here, and they are college-bound, and we don't have really a good, solid trades program to help support those students as well, and we can get quality teachers for the trades program as well and be able to build from that. I will tell you, I bring the quality with problem-solving skills, critical thinking skills, and the ability to build a relationship with these groups, to be able to have a team effort, to be able to help make support their lives better.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsbury. And Brad Boyer?
As a member of the school board, I want the school board to lead. I want the school board to set the tone for the whole district. I want the school board to cast a bold vision for the school. Part of that vision is going to be giving each of those 2,400 people purpose for their job. Each one of those people are important. Now, it's not going to be the seven members of the school board that communicates that, but we're going to work with administrators, and we're going to give, make sure every person understands how important their role is and how they can affect and improve the lives of the kids that they touch every day. I want to give, I want to make their position significant. I want to make sure they understand what that contribution that they're making every day, how that plays out in the big picture. That will all be achieved by setting goals for the administrators at a high level and all the way down to, you know, the folks who are working at each, every, each school. We want to, the other part that I want to do is I want to remove as many obstacles as we possibly can. One of the things that I feel that we have is teaching sometimes is no longer teaching. There are so many things that teachers have to do that those responsibilities get in the way of teaching, and so I want to remove as many obstacles as possible. I want to let teachers teach. I want to let teachers get back to inspiring the kids. If we have inspired children, inspired students in our district, we will be great.
All right, thank you, Brad. And I think, have you already chosen? We're going to double back here.
Number five.
Number five for District One. Thank you, Brad. Okay, question five. Effective boards are data savvy. They embrace and monitor data even when the information is negative and use it to drive continuous improvement. How would you approach monitoring and utilizing data to drive continuous improvement?
Very carefully.
All right. In reality, data is important.
I completely agree with that. But one of the things that I think that we find out when we get data is oftentimes we aren't getting the raw data. And many times when data gets to the school board, many times when data gets to a level in a corporation, that data has been massaged, that data has been manipulated. So, why I say we have to approach it very carefully is because there's probably somebody that is feeding that data to us that has an agenda, and what I want to do is I want to strip away all that agenda from that data, and I want to look at the raw numbers. I want to figure out what needs to be done. At the end of the day, if our only decisions are being made on data, you know what? You can put a machine up here to do this because the school board are living, breathing humans that make decisions that are based on data, they're based on intellect, they're based on emotion. And so even though data is important, I completely agree with that, I approach it very cautiously, very carefully, and I'm very particular about how that data gets massaged before it gets to me, and I like to approach everything with some common sense.
All right, thank you, Brad Boyer. And Mr. Ellsbury?
I would tell you, I deal with data on a daily basis. I'm a banker by trade. I run a portfolio of over $125 million that I manage, and I will tell you, I am, I deal with data day in and day out. And there is ways to skew data to where it meets the objective of the person that's giving it to you. So, you do have to take it with a grain of salt and look at it from all different angles. Data in itself is what you want it to be. So, I will tell you, Brad is right. You have to strip down the data and be able to read it and give it an unbiased perspective. One thing that I do bring to this is an unbiased perspective. With what I do with finances, I am able to articulate, and I'm able to break down the data and be able to come up with solutions with using the critical thinking skills that I have, problem-solving skills that I have, and to be able to just use some common sense to be able to understand financial reports and be able to come up with solutions to the problems that we have. I will tell you all that, at the end of the day, I shall do my best, I will do it with a clear conscience, and I will do it for the constituents of where I live at. I love this place. Everyone in this audience is here because they love the place where we live at, and I will tell you, at the end of the day, I will do the best that I can for the people that I serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsbury. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I'll start off by saying, I think that I agree with Brad's point that you have to be careful with data. I will say that I'm less concerned about our ability to obtain clean data. I think that we can get that. I think the problem generally now, as we're moving to this world where we're trying to use data to drive our decisions, is that we're picking data points at the exclusion of gut instinct, teacher instinct, and their experience in the classroom. You know, we've had examples of this in the past with, you know, the focus that we went through on No Child Left Behind, sort of dominating all the other objectives that teachers had for their classroom, especially at those young ages. And so, I think that's the biggest problem with data is that maybe you can't get everything that you want, and when you try to drive a data point, you do it at the exclusion of other things. So, I think that's one big part of it. Having said that, I think we are in this rich environment for getting and processing data, and what's really important is that you have a board who's willing to make sure that even though you're obtaining that data, that you're not forcing teachers to manage to one or two or five data points, and instead you're taking that feedback and asking, how can we improve this data set so that we can get at some of those relevant areas in the future, and how do we involve teachers in really using the data to improve their own outcomes and their own career going forward? So, I mostly agree with Mr. Boyer, though I think that I'm less concerned about the quality of the data and more concerned about how we use that and implement the results of it.
Okay, thank you, Josh. So, we'll go back to District Two. Number six for District Two. Okay, effective school boards are accountability-driven, spending less time on operational issues, and more time focused on policies to improve student achievement. How would you maintain and encourage your colleagues to maintain focus on student achievement rather than operational issues?
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's real easy to get into the weeds, right? That's, you know, as the runner of two software companies, I know I can't be everywhere at one place. I can't do everything on my own, and it's important that we hire leaders that can handle these details for us. And I think the premise of the question is, you know, how do we make sure that we put those right people in place so that you don't have to worry about the details? And I think that starts first by getting the right admin in the right places, right? Making sure people are working in the right places that suit their talents. Because once you get people that love what they're doing in the right places, then you as a board member don't have to worry about the weeds. You don't have to worry about the details, and that's been my experience running two companies, is that the right people make that a whole lot easier.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Janet?
Okay, we get these long, like-
No, of course. Yep. Questions, I mean, I'm happy to read it again.
Well, I think, I think I've got it. I just, what I'd like to say about accountability with focus on education, if I can, is that a good summary? I think that, you know, to me, when I'm, throughout this process, when we're asked questions, the first thing I think of is, how does this affect our kids? How does this affect our teachers? And so for any policy or anything that comes through, that is, yes, we have to deal with all the other stuff that comes with those, but if we just, if that's the focus and we can really figure out how that affects each one of our students and how that truly affects our teachers, and if we don't know, we need to ask them and go from there. I think as long as you have folks, and I know part of the question was, how do you keep your fellow board members focused on that as well? I would just be that person. I would be that person and say, hey, wait a minute, what are we, you know, let's just circle back to, you know, the basics. What are we doing and how are we impacting the most important people that we're serving?
Thank you, Janet. Frank?
Thank you, John. Well, first off, just recognizing that sometimes you do have to put operations before other things. An example of that would be the financial crisis that the school district went through when funding got pulled. It was all of a sudden, all hands on deck, the fires are raging, how are we going to keep the doors open to be able to, you know, provide them, provide our mandate to teach our students and save as many teacher jobs as possible? So, there are situations where operations are necessary to be focused on. However, right now, we are in a very healthy financial situation thanks to our increased prices of our homes and the deft footwork of the board and Mike Reuter. So, what we need to do is make sure we've set clear goals and we're utilizing, we're doing that with the administration and the teachers as to what the achievement looks like, and we need to make sure we're crafting those policies to allow the administration and the teachers to create the procedures to make those things happen, and then we need to implement them with teamwork with the teachers and administration, and then measure them towards the end and hold people accountable for the measurement of those.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Brad, have you already drawn?
Number 17.
17. All right, for District Four, question 17. What are your thoughts on school bullying in elementary, middle, and junior high schools?
I was expecting four or five more sentences.
Excellent choice, Brad.
That's an interesting question. The very first, I think the second day after I announced that I was running for school board, I ran into a parent who I knew through my son's Boy Scouts troop at the car wash, and I told him I was running for school board, and he said that he had just recently pulled his son out of the schools, out of high school, and was homeschooling him because of bullying around the schools. And, you know, I was like, wow, what I've got myself into, isn't that day number two, and I'm hearing these kind of issues, and this, but it made a real impression on me. I think you have to have good policies in place. I know we've started the bullying education, the videos that are required by the parents and anybody that's- and anybody that's involved with the schools to watch. We have to make sure you're implementing those policies in a thoughtful manner. Not only does it give a student the opportunity to have other options if they are being bullied, but also to deal with those that are doing the bullying, and make sure that they are being properly disciplined as well.
Thank you Brad. Ms. Chambers?
Thank you. So as I've been campaigning and canvassing, I've heard from quite a few families who've told me, as soon as I walked to their house, people I've never met, who brought their teenage daughter out and said, she's being sexually harassed in our high schools, what can you do? And it's an issue in the high schools, obviously, we're also dealing with other types of bullying in the elementaries and junior high levels. So this is something that's happening that we need to make sure we're not brushing aside. I think the important thing the board can do, obviously, it's not our job to micromanage in the schools, but we need to set the tone that this is unacceptable, and that we're going to deal with it immediately, and make sure the students that are being harassed or bullied are treated with respect, and that the students that are doing the bullying or the harassing are being dealt with quickly, fairly, and making sure that we get to the root of what's going on. Because it may be something in their home that's creating these issues. Not to brush aside that behavior, but these are still kids we're dealing with, and we need to make sure as a school, we're dealing with every student fairly. So we can't just punish the kids. We need to talk to those kids, figure out what's the root of this issue, why is this happening? And for the kids that are being bullied or harassed, making sure that we're treating them with respect, creating a safety plan with them and their families, and making sure we're either figuring out how to make them safe in their school, and what we can do as an administration to make sure that the schools understand the importance of dealing with this, and set the tone for the entire district.
Thank you Mrs. Chambers. Mrs. Riordan-McSully?
All right. Well, with school bullying, I believe that early intervention is the key. We have to create a common language and education to parents, teachers, and staff. I created a curriculum, because there was not one, for early childhood education. Now with early childhood education, you have to start children off early to understand what bullying looks like, what it's like to be a bully, and then create a common language so parents can help their students, either if they're being bullied or if they are bullied. I presented this curriculum in front of the I A Y C, at the I A Y C conference, and it was something that was never, ever talked about before. Early intervention is the key. Children are being bullied. Everyone probably in this room has been bullied one time in their life, and it's an awful experience to go through. So it's something that we can do as a board to try to figure out a way to create the common language, to uncover transparency, and to have a zero tolerance, to figure out where the root was, where it came from, and how and why a child is bullying or being bullied. What can we do to establish that safety? That goes hand-in-hand with mental health, that also goes hand-in-hand with school safety. Now, we all know that hurt people hurt people. So what is the root to the problem? Does a child need one of us to reach out to them? What can we do to help save those students to feel safe in the world that they are involved in, so deep learning can happen, to remove those boundaries, so children feel safe wherever they are?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Riordan-McSully. Do you want to go to the middle, go to Janet in the middle, maybe to go to 2 again? Okay, right on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, very good. No, no, no.
Are we waiting? Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh. I thought, okay.
Sorry. I know. We're not exactly Peyton and Marvin quite yet, so first time.
Number 4.
Number 4 for number 4. Right? I can forget things very quickly. And then Ms. Chambers, you'll go first, if that's okay.
Of course.
So question 4. HSE Schools, HSE Schools has been criticized at times for a lack of transparency. What initiatives would you support to establish a strong communication structure with both internal and external stakeholders?
Well, this is one of the main reasons I decided to run. There were decisions being made last year that I saw that didn't appear right or wrong, that the board was listening to the community. Parents weren't being heard, teachers were being left out of processes that they would normally be involved in, and decisions were being made without really getting that feedback and listening to it. So I was one of those people that was probably criticizing the board for that. Right or wrong, it's not to say that they weren't listening, but it didn't appear that way to the community and the parents I spoke with. So a few things that I'd like to see happen, I'd like to move some of the board information from Board Docs to our new website. The district spent $100,000 on the website, and I think it would be important for the community to move some of that information so it's easier for parents to get to. I'd like to create listening tours with the board members to visit PTOs, to set up meetings where parents can come, so we can get more feedback from them. Obviously, listening to people within the district, teachers are, without them, I mean, why are we even here? They're there to teach our kids, and we need to listen to them and make sure we know what they need, so we can get that to them, so that they can teach our kids. If we're not listening to our teachers, we're not helping our kids. I think that's one of the biggest things we can do.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Mr. Banks, that's fine. Yep. We'll stick with District 4, then we'll get old District 3 in there.
Transparency is always important, I think. The general public probably doesn't know that the board just has completed construction of a new boardroom that will include, the board meetings are going to start being aired where they can be watched, and the public will be able to view the actual board meetings. So I think the board is taking some good, positive steps in that direction. I think that it's important to make everything as accessible as possible. The website's brand new, so I'm sure the staff is working on those things and putting them in the places that are most accessible to the public. I've told the PTOs that I've been meeting with as a candidate, that it will be one of my commitments to make at least one of their meetings per semester for the ones that live in the fourth district, so I can get direct feedback from the parents. This is, District 4 is an open seat, so we're both new candidates and bringing fresh ideas to the perspective. One other thing we have to, the media sometimes criticize the board for lack of transparency. What we have to remember is sometimes they're dealing with issues that involve personnel matters. Sometimes you have to listen to the attorneys, and you have to make decisions that maybe don't appear to be transparent, but you're protecting a staff member, or doing something that is legally required of you. And that's something as a board member, we're going to have to do. So if it's not maybe something that is going to be popular, you have to be willing to make the proper and tough decision.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Then we're going to come back to this way. So that was District 4, and then Mrs. Riordan-McSully. And just one side note, some people came in late. Michelle Fullheart just wasn't able to attend tonight, her father's having surgery in Fort Wayne. So, but Mrs. Riordan-McSully is for District 3, and question 4.
I believe in strong communication, external and internal. The hardest part about being a member of this community is knowing what's going on within our schools. There's several places where the communication is happening. So one of my goals would be to figure out a one-stop shops that everybody can go to to click on their school, or figure out a way that they can get all the information needed. To go from the Board Docs onto the website would be very helpful as a parent, because sometimes those board documents are kind of really hard to weed through. Communication is the key to a strong community, and to create a safe place to welcome feedback from our parents and our community, that may be a way for parents to have a voice, and a way for transparency, to be more open. Also, something that wasn't mentioned, but I would like to talk about, is just to increase the transparency when there's job openings for teachers, that they can apply for, for different positions, or increase of maybe a different school to go to. But that would be something that I'd also like to see changed, is the open transparency for internal communications for teachers, and external one-stop shop for parents to be able to see what's going on in all schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Riordan-McSully. Then we're going back to District 2. Yep. And there were no questions submitted regarding the calendar, so I would have asked them. But if in your last round, if you want one, I've got a few. Janet?
7.
Number 7 for District 2. All right, question number 7. What are your thoughts on foreign languages being taught K through 8? Are there any languages you'd like to see offered? And also, what are your thoughts on foreign languages being taught at the high school level, and any modifications recommended there? So K through 8 languages, any suggestions? And then also, high school, any modifications?
Well, I think that was actually part of the discussion during the last, when we talked about referendum money. And I would, I would fully support a program where we had foreign language in our elementary schools. I think that is something that we lack. And I guess, to me, I would think, of course, the first thing I think of is Spanish, just because both of my children are taking Spanish right now. But I think just maybe continuing what we take at the high school level, Spanish, French, German, and extending that all the way down to kindergarten would be amazing. It would be even maybe as far-reaching to think that it'd be pretty cool to have a Spanish immersion school here in our district. So I fully support foreign language. I think it's amazing. I think it prepares our students for the next, the next level, and much more advanced thinking, so I'd be fully in support of it.
All right. Muchas gracias. Now just give it to the one you're going to vote for.
Well, let's talk some more then.
All right, we'll go with Frank. Thank you Janet.
All right. Thanks, Ed. Thanks for voting for me. So foreign language K through 8, I would fully support enacting a program as early as possible, particularly with, you know, Spanish and French. At the high school level, just as a, on a personal side note here, my daughter Jessica took Latin, and she was a straight A Latin student until the funding got cut for the Latin program at Fisher's High School. And she ended up in a classroom where it was three different years of classes plus AP being taught by one teacher in the same classroom. So I would love to see Latin come back, but I want to make sure that we have the funding and the resources to make sure that these programs are taught properly, and not just kind of thrown together. I'd love to see Chinese and Japanese taught at the high school as well. I think, you know, given the world we live in, that's perfectly something we should shoot for. So I guess in conclusion, I'd say I fully support immersion and teaching foreign languages from K through 12. And I would love to see us continue to build on our foreign language program at the high school level with more languages.
Marci Boku? Matt? I got one more. I'm going to have to go to the audience.
Can't wait to find out what it is. So not to reiterate what's already been said here, but, you know, our kids are going to be trying to compete in a world where India and China are graduating more engineering and gifted and talented kids than we in America are graduating kids total. And how do we differentiate ourselves? How do our kids become the future leaders when they're going to be entering that environment? As each year goes by, the education systems in China and India, for example, get better and better. And we need to set them up for success now. And so, you know, studies show over and over again how teaching foreign language early is best for kids. They learn it quicker, their brains are better at accepting it. And so I'm absolutely in support, just like the other two candidates here. I think we should focus on the big markets, so that our kids are better trained when they finally graduate. So places like Germany, Mandarin in China, Japanese, I think if I was going to focus on those languages, that's what I would do.
All right. Shukranja Zealand? So we're back to District Wahed.
He's got the question.
Oh, all right. Mr. Ellsberry, what you got?
Number 18.
You sure?
I am sure. It's either that or 81.
All right, there's only 19. So District 1, question 18. All right, how do you assess the current safety in our schools, and what would you do, if anything, to improve it?
All right. Excellent question, because that seems to be on everybody's mind in recent months. Current safety protocols are decent. I mean, I visit many schools, I do guest speaking at the Hamilton Southeastern High School, and I'll be doing some guest speaking at a couple of the other schools as well coming up in the months. And you have to go through the ID process and get signed in and such, which is great. The thing that I would do to enhance this, without trying to incur any additional cost to the taxpayer, is with our growing police department that we have in Fisher's. The police department, you can tell, need additional space. There's places in our school system right now where we could actually house officers during their paperwork time, roll call time, be able to have satellite locations for these officers, to where we can provide that space free of charge for the city, and then in turn, allow them to be able to do their work. And the one thing I don't want to see is seeing an officer that is parked in a parking lot out in the middle of nowhere where no one's around. I would rather have them, if they need to be in their car, do their work in the parking lot of the schools. I feel that overall, with that partnership with the mayor, with the police chief, and the school system, we can come together, come up with a solution, to be able to have those officers in each of the school, and I will tell you, sorry, with that, to be able to have the community come together to support that effort.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ellsberry.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyer?
I want our schools to be safe. I think that safe schools will be an environment the kids can learn in. Ultimately, there are many things that I understand are schools, that we have done at our schools to make them safe. There's some things that we probably don't know about, and we probably don't need to know about, and probably the community at large doesn't need to know about, because that kind of takes away the advantage in some of the safety. So, the end of the day, I think that we have made strides and made improvements, and we're probably in a pretty good spot. I do believe that we have a community school. And when we talk about a community school, I do think that there are probably programs, whether they're resource officers, that could be housed at the schools. We could reach out and, I'll say, build on a program, or institute a program where we could have some, a greater relationship, a broader relationship with the Fisher's Police Department, which may or may not make our schools more safe, but at least there would be a visible presence that may deter somebody from wanting to do something.
Yeah, so, you know, I talked before about not being, you know, a current expert on all these issues, and I'm certainly not a security expert. I do feel confident when I send my children to school every day. I feel confident in the procedures that are there at the elementary school. I know we can do better. I do believe that school resource officers are really important, and they should be a goal. There are trade-offs there, and those are difficult things to do. I'd love to see a school resource officer in every building. And I think something that my opponents picked up on as well is that, you know, it is about safety itself, and it's also about making sure that our students feel that they're in a safe environment to further their learning. And so there's both sort of the real threats that exist and the perceived threats, and I think we need...
A question that's already been asked, or you can dive into the red bowl of fun, and then about 90 seconds to answer that, give or take, and then 90 seconds to close. So you can use the three minutes however you choose to do so.
Kinds of choices. This is amazing. I'm going to dare to dive into the bowl.
All right. 16.
Just to remind you, you can answer and close.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Yeah, and you can segregate the time anyway.
Yeah, I might.
And this is a, and so then we'll come on down, we'll do 3, 4, I'm sorry, 2, 4, 3, and then we'll come down... And then we'll come down, Brad, to you, to do that as well. And then even if you just have a little bit of the gist of the question, I'll be able to figure it out. But excellent choice, Mr. Multer. So, what is your top reason for wanting to become a school board member?
Where was that one earlier? There's a lot of reasons. I'm not a one reason candidate. You know, we, I'd like to see better pathways for our kids, improve communications. But one, one of the topics, I'll use this question to talk about, that, that hasn't been brought up today is balancing technology and screen time. One of the reasons why I got involved in following our schools and participating in parent technology committees, superintendent's advisory council, and volunteering and all of that was, you know, as a founder of a software company, I, I think we can use our technology a little better. I think we don't need, K through four, they don't, they don't need to be in front of screens all of the time. And, and at the same time, the way we implement our apps, the way, the tools that we're putting on those devices, I think we could vastly improve. Right now, parents have all these different things coming at them. They've got Canvas, they've got Skyward, they've got Seesaw. What are, what are they supposed to pay attention to? And then with these devices coming home, now, now they've gotta be the IT administrator at their house, right? You've gotta somehow figure out how to keep your kids, you know, off, off of the devices when you need to. And, and by the way, if you didn't know, AT&amp;T, you know, one of the biggest providers in our community of, of internet service, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't have an internet filter that you can set, set on your router. So, we've sent home all these devices, but yet haven't really given parents the tools to monitor them and to use them safely. So, one of the things I would like to do if I was elected to the board is, is improve our technology approach. On that note, you know, big thanks to the fiscal conservatives for hosting us here. I wish we could've talked more about the finances and budget pictures. Maybe we didn't draw the right questions.
But you can talk about, yeah.
But before you go vote, I'd like to, I'd like you to ask yourself this question. You know, is, is HSE operating and executing at the highest level possible? Is every dollar being spent wisely? Are we, are we communicating the best way? Or is there still more we can do? If you think we're, we're at the top, if you think we're, we're doing the best we can, then, you know, I'm, I'm not the person for you. But if you think we can do better, then you, you probably know that it's gonna take diversity. It's gonna take people with different experiences to get there. Someone who's grown companies from scratch. Someone who's worked in the public sector and worked in the private sector. And I, I wanna set our schools up. I wanna create a foundation for the next fifteen or twenty years, right? And, and that's gonna happen in this election. So, if you, if you think it's, it's time to set a new tone, I'd like you to vote Matt Multer in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And Janet, again, you can take a pick. You can choose one. If you get me the gist, I'll be happy to find it. I'll even change the rules, Matt. Good suggestion. You want me to just ask you one on a certain topic? I'll pick one. The floor is yours.
Well, I, I'm just going to piggyback on the transparency question. I think, for me, if you know, if, I'm currently sitting on three PTO boards as a member at large. I do a lot of fundraising. And I do that because I like to keep involved in what's going on in the schools. And I like to help out and, and raise the funds to supplement our teachers for where the district cannot fund everything. So, and I want to just state that I don't plan on, on stopping volunteering. Obviously, that position on the school board would cause me to scale back a bit. But I don't intend on, on leaving. So, that would put me in a position to be available, to continue to be available to our teachers and our parents and students on a, on a very regular basis. So, so with that being said, during, during this campaigning process, I do talk a lot about my extensive volunteering experience. And I wanna explain why that matters. It does because it proves, it proves that I've been committed to the educational experiences of students in our district for twelve years. And way before I started campaigning or even thought about running for the school board, it shows that I'm willing to do what it takes to help our kids succeed and not just my own. It is true, I started volunteering because I wanted to see what my kids were doing and what, what, what their educational experiences were like. But then I realized that, that my dedication to them just continues to help them grow. Not just my students, but this, or my kids, but students in their classes. And then eventually, as a PTO in our whole school. I think my experience has shown me that people don't, don't care what you, what you say. I could say anything tonight, but what, what voters care about is what you've done. And I've proven that, that this is important to me. And I, I have, our parents in our district have expressed to me that they want someone to represent them, who will listen to what they, what they're concerned about and be able to speak up even when the opinion is unpopular. And I, and I'll do that. I'm, I'm not a stranger to resistance. As a volunteer leader, I've spent a lot of time asking people for time and money. And that's something that people aren't easily parting with. So, I keep volunteering though because it's important. It's important for our kids to have folks that care about them, whether it be a parent volunteer like me, an educator, an administrator, or even a school board member. And so, for that reason, I humbly ask for your support and your vote on November sixth. Janet Pritchett, District Two.
Thank you, Janet. Frank?
Sure, so I'd like to go back to the safety question a little, for a little bit here.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think as the question was posed, I think actually that our district's kind of ahead of the curve in a lot of respects. I have a lot of respect for Mike Bearsford and, and Mike Johnson and what they've done together to, and Ryan Taylor, what they've done to, to put the district on a, on a sound footing. You know, during this campaign and even before, I've spoken with both Mike Johnson and Ryan Taylor and Mike Bearsford. And, and basically, it's, it's all about people and putting in, investing in people and not stuff when it comes to safety and security in our schools. And it's not just about, you know, the catastrophic things that have happened, for example, in Florida or up in Noblesville. It's all types of safety. It's bullying, it's mental health issues. And we need to make sure that we're supporting and, and training our teams in the schools, the SROs, the mental health professionals, the counselors, and the teachers altogether and providing enough funding and support and training for them. We need an anonymous way for students to report real time when things are happening so things can get taken care of, to avoid issues in the hallways. So, with that, in, in closing, I'd like to thank a few, few people first. First off, thank you, John DeLucia, Mr. DeLucia, for moderating the forum. The fiscal conservatives of Hamilton County for sponsoring the event. Mr. Multer and Mrs. Pritchett for engaging in the conversation tonight. And thank you all who have come out tonight to be engaged voters. It's extremely important. Most of all, though, I wanna thank my family, James and, and my other son, John, who's at rehearsal tonight, for, you know, going out and putting up banners in cold weather and helping me maintain those all around the city. My, my daughter Jessica, who's supporting me from far away in Kentucky. And my wonderful wife, Kathy Whalen, who's my sounding board and support during the election. You know, the HSE schools are at a crossroads. We're going through redistricting. We've got several leadership roles that have transitioned or are transitioning. We're gonna start to plateau or possibly decline in student population. We have a wonderful opportunity and responsibility to shape the vision of HSE schools for the next generation. I believe that my star vision can help guide that decision-making and fulfill that opportunity. I've been actively working to frank genuine conversations with parents, teachers, community leaders, and residents about what they want and how we can make it happen. I've found that we want high-performing schools, healthy learning environment. While having these conversations, I've earned the endorsements of eight city council members, Mike Bearsford, the Carmel Clay School Superintendent, the HSE EA, and many other community leaders.
Thank you, Frank.
A vote for Whalen, District Two, is a vote for a new perspective on the board with integrity, experience, and knowledge. Thank you.
So, there's District Two. We'll go to District Four. Brad?
Okay, I'll address a couple of safety and partnership questions that came up. My platform was the acronym SAFE, which stood for Security, Academics, Facilities, and Extracurricular Activities. A lot of those go hand in hand. Safety is important. That includes mental health, that includes physical safety, that includes supporting extracurricular activities, which make our students feel tied to their community so that they don't get in a, in a situation where they feel desperate and the need to do something violent. I have also been very excited about the partnerships that the schools looking to do with the city, engaging their business community and starting new opportunities. To that end, I have received endorsements from five of the city council members. There are two county council members that both live in District Four. They've also endorsed me, as has both trustees, the Wayne Township trustee and the Fall Creek Township trustee. It's because I've shown myself to be a community leader and they know that I'm a person that you can be counted on to, to work hard for the community. When I've gone through my career, I haven't just done the job. I've taken leadership roles. When I was a Hamilton County prosecutor, I was promoted very quickly to major felony. I didn't just join the Hamilton County Bar Association. I became the secretary and served on the executive team. I helped coach and train high school students on the mock trial program. And I volunteered with prevail in the Children's Up and Downs Program, children that were in abused homes. When I went to Marion County, I was promoted from major felony to the homicide unit, to a division chief in a period of four years where I supervised thirty-six other attorneys and dealt with multimillion-dollar budget issues. During that time, I also worked with Fisher Soccer Club and Indy Premier Soccer Club, where I served on that board for eight years, served as the board president for two years, overseeing a staff of twenty-five full-time employees, twenty-six part-time employees, and a two-million-dollar budget. When I left my job as a prosecutor, my business partner and I started a business in 2012 that we have grown from 2012 ourselves and now are in the process of hiring our fourteenth full-time employee. During that time, I've also involved myself in other projects and things that are near and dear to my heart. I've served as a Big Brother and the Big Brother, Big Sisters program for the last eight years as well. I'm a proven community leader. I'll bring that same level of dedication and leadership to the position of school board. On November sixth, I ask you to bank on banks. Brad Banks for District Four School Board.
Thank you, Brad. And Mrs. Chambers?
Thank you. I'm just gonna touch on a few topics that... I made some notes on some topics and then I'll, I'll do a closing. So, one of the issues that came up was attracting and retaining top educators. And I really think this is an important way we can move our district forward and really compete with neighboring districts. In order to do that, we need to reach out and recruit at different types of schools. We need to get out, outside of Indiana, although we have great teachers that are, have been educated here. There are teachers in other states that we can reach out to, including recruiting at historically black colleges and universities to increase our diversity within our teaching staff. And we need to pay as much as we can and make sure we're giving as many benefits as we can to those teachers to make sure that they can live in our community comfortably. With that said, we need to do so in a financially responsible way. Obviously, we have a set budget. We get a set number of dollars from the state. We need to be able to work within that budget without having to go out and, and run referendums every few years because we're running out of money again. So, I think that's really important to let our community know that we're using their dollars responsibly but also using them in the best way possible. We can see our priorities by what we see in our budget. And we need to make sure as a district, that's reflected. We need to make sure we have the right people in the right spots. That means oversight. That means oversight on the superintendent and making sure we're holding them responsible and accountable for the goals of the board and the district so that we don't have to micromanage them because that's not the role of the board. And accountability and transparency, again, one of the main issues I wanted to run to make sure that our parents and teachers are really heard. We should always be asking why. Why are we doing something? There should always be a why, not only to drive us and our decisions, but so that we can explain those decisions clearly and concisely to our parents and educators and administrators within our district. This, this election isn't about who we know or how much money we can donate to different organizations. It's really about which candidate has a vision to move our district forward and who has seen issues that we can improve and areas we can improve and has ideas on how to improve those things. And I really believe that I'm that candidate in our district. Some of the issues we've talked about today and other candidate forums, this is about finding things we can improve to keep our kids engaged so that then when they leave our district, they're ready to go to college, they're ready to work, and they're ready for a global economy. My daughter's in first grade. She's already had four peers in her classroom that came to her class speaking zero English, which is great because it means our community is changing. It means we need to make sure our kids are prepared, whether they work here in Indiana or, God forbid, my child leaves the state of Indiana when they graduate. But if they choose to do that, that they're ready for whatever life brings to them. So, for that reason, I ask for your support on November sixth. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. So, that's District Four. And then to District Three, Mrs. Reardon McSully?
I would like to answer the exceptional, attracting exceptional teachers and how to, how to recruit those, those people.
Great.
And how to do that. So, I believe that everything rises and falls on good leadership. And good leadership isn't just at the board level or at the superintendent level, but that's in our schools. And the, the principals and the administrators at the schools directly affect the teachers that work there. And it's extremely important to have leaders placed at our schools that pour into our staff, pour into everybody, and create an environment of, of a rich learning environment that people wanna work at, that people wanna be there, and that kids get inspired to wanna learn more. Teaching is a hard profession and to attract great teachers, we need great leaders. Now, that being said, I want teachers to also be a part of a community. And that takes a community at each level, at each school, and in each classroom, at a, at each grade level, to, to be able to celebrate and develop teachers' unique abilities and to let them draw upon that. It's just, it's, it's amazing when you have an environment of a healthy working environment. People tend to work harder for less. Now, I'm not saying that we pay our teachers less, but I'm saying that we will attract and retain a better level of teachers if we just have a wonderful environment. And that takes us as a board and that takes all of the people that are placed in our schools to make sure that we're hiring the right people to help inspire the teachers that work for us. Now, in closing, I just wanna thank everyone. The fiscal conservatives are a really neat group of guys to get to know. I really like what they stand for. So, thank you very much. And it's encouraging to see how many people have come out to wanna be a part of this great board. And it just shows that we have a great community that we work for. It's wonderful to be a part of that community and I just wanna say thank you. I love watching our community grow and evolve and I look forward to the challenges of successfully managing that same process within our schools. So, vote for me on, in November and for District Three.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reardon McSully. So, we'll come back to District One. What do you think, Bill? Make the call. Boom, sorry.
All right. I felt that I'd get the last word. So, I, I think that the one question that I wanna touch on, maybe take a little bit of a different tact with it just because I think it's important in politics to do this a little bit. There was the question about foreign language in the schools and at the elementary school level and, and, you know, three candidates that I respect very much were all in favor of that. And I just wanna point out that, you know, that this is a situation, again, where there are trade-offs. And so, as much as I'd like to say, yes, I support foreign language in schools, which I do, you also have to answer the question, what are we currently teaching at the elementary school that we're willing to give up in order to do that? I had the experience of participating in the state's K-12 STEM Strategic Development Plan. And there was a third-grade teacher that was in there who said, look, I would love to teach STEM, but so long... love to teach STEM, but so long as third-grade students are assessed based on math and reading, I don't have time to teach STEM in my classroom." So until you either forget to grade me based on my assessment, or decide that you're not going to do that, or you're going to make this a part of the assessment, then we have to make trade-offs. Some schools have given up recess time in order for more instruction. I'd also like our schools to teach computer science, I'd also like them to do more on anti-bullying intervention. And so I think we have to be realistic here and say, it's easy to say, sure, we'll do that, we'll do that, and we'll do that. But there's always trade-offs to be given there. And I just want to point out that I think that's the role of the board, to make those trade-offs. The next thing that I really want to talk about here, just in closing, is I'll make the short case for myself in that, you know, I had the opportunity to work in Governor Daniel's office where I got to craft a policy to try to rescue the state's Insolvent Unemployment Insurance Fund. It's about ultimately a $4 billion piece of legislation from where we were to where we need to be. After that, I got sent over to basically implement it. And so I've had 800 employees ultimately that have reported to me, a $50 million budget, you know, IT communication shops have reported up to me. But the bigger point that I'd make here is that, yeah, I think that I can do the work, but I actually think that these guys can as well. I think people can make a very reasonable decision to vote for Ben or for Brad. And I think if after the election, someone comes up and they said, "Hey, look, we just thought that he was the better candidate," I'd be okay with that. My bigger fear is someone coming up and saying, "Oh, we had no idea you were a candidate, we knew nothing about any of the individuals." And so, I'm thankful for this event tonight. It's a $240 million program that ultimately the board oversees, and it's the future of our children that we're overseeing. And so, I just wish that there was some element of the passion that people put into these national races where their vote matters so little that they could put into races and understanding this. Because again, I think they can make reasonable choices really across the board up here. I just hope they'll make an informed one when they exit the polls. So, thanks to all of you fellow candidates, and thanks for those that have hosted and allowed this forum and the previous forums. Thank you all.
Thank you, Josh. Mr. Ellsbury?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Bill. I would also like to thank Amy. She's a great woman, I appreciate her sponsorship for this as well. I would also like to thank my wife Heidi. She's been supporting me throughout this whole process and very supportive and very insightful with her being a teacher and to get her perspective and her point of view as well. With all the candidates up here, I have to say, we all have a love and a vested interest in this community. And that's really the reason why I did this, to help build community. There's a few items I'd like to go through as to what I would do if elected, which I would hope you would elect me for this. One is, I like to see grandparents get in free into the sports activities for their grandchildren. We have a percentage of our community that cannot afford some of the luxuries as others can, but a lot of our grandparents in the community are on a fixed income. And it would be nice to be able to allow those grandparents come and see their grandkids involved with those sports programs and different activities that would normally cost admission to be able to get them in for free. The PTO, I'm a big supporter of the PTO, I deal with about a half a dozen of the PTO accounts throughout the district, and I do what I can to support and donate. I help with clubs, sponsored multiple clubs throughout the district as well, so I'm very involved in the school district. I've also been a guest speaker, currently a guest speaker with a few of the different classrooms and school programs. So I'm really involved, and really, the moral to the story is, I'm really involved with the school district. I currently am an empty nester. I had a daughter that went through the school system, she went through Fisher's High School, graduated, she's off on her own now. But now that I'm an empty nester, I have time to be involved with this process, to be able to help make this a better situation, and to build on the great things that our current board has done for the community as well. I will tell you, I have that time involved. The people that I'm running against, you know, they have, you know, they seem to be good people as well. My thing is, is I just, I feel like I can put full-forteth effort into this job here. The, I would ask, you know, I need to ask yourself, you know, why Ben? You know, why would he be a good candidate? I would tell you, in addition to that, the trades program, the trades program is really important to me. You have to think about, okay, my kid gets out of high school and they're not going to college, what are they going to do next? I know when I left high school, it was kind of like, okay, what am I going to do now for a job? How am I going to bridge that into a career? I was very fortunate through, to be where I'm at today, but there's a lot of those kids that are not, that they don't have the, I don't know what I'm going to do after high school, and I'd like to be able to bridge that gap. The, I want to be fiscally responsible and good stewards with the funds to the community as well. I've got more to say, I know I have to stop.
Thanks, Mr. Ellsbury.
Teachers, there's a lot to do with that, but just vote for me. I appreciate your support and your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsbury. Brad Boyer?
Thank you to all. I think I'll kind of cut that short because we've said thank you to everybody, and to go over that anymore, I don't think we need to. But as I think about the questions that were asked, I would love to have a chance to answer a whole bunch of them, but I don't know which one I'm going to pick. So, in an effort to wrap this up, you know, I will tell you, student achievement is important, to eliminate bullying is important, to look at the language, that was an interesting one to me in particular, I would really like just to teach English. I'd like kids to know how to speak, how to write, how to spell, how to just do English before we maybe teach a whole bunch of other languages. You know, technology is important, but I'd really like to have our kids learn how to communicate and develop those interpersonal skills. As an employer in the community, when I hire somebody, I need them to not be super tech-savvy. I really need them to be resourceful, I need them to understand how to work with others, I really need them to understand where to find information, because you just can't ask Google or Siri or whatever other search you want. You have to be able to think through it and understand how things work in context. So there's a whole bunch of questions that I'd really love to cover, and we just don't have time to do it. But for a lot of life's experiences that have brought me to this point, I believe that I'm the perfect person to be on the school board at this time. My life experiences include the fact that I'm a lifelong learner. I don't believe that you ever stop learning. I think you have to learn every day, and if you aren't willing and dedicated to learning something new every day, life is over. I'm a Sunday school teacher, that's taught me a lot, dealing with these young kids. I'm a husband, and we celebrated 25 years of marriage this past summer. That teaches you a lot. And I'm a small business owner, and that teaches you a lot too. These experiences have taught me some of these things that we haven't talked much about, and I think these are important. Teamwork, hard work, dedication, perseverance, showing up on time, doing what you say you're going to do, when you say you're going to do it. Passion, discernment, love, grace, humility, self-confidence, and accountability. I know that relationships are core to what we do. They are, they define our very existence, and I would like for stronger relationships to exist up and down the school corporation. What I want to do is, I want to cast a bold vision, I want to set high goals, I want to hold people accountable. I want to create an environment where our kids are inspired to do more, to be more. I want our teachers to be, provide the fuel that lifts our kids onward and upward to new heights that they would never achieve but for being in our school system. I think what I know I want is, I want our students to graduate from our school system, and I want them to be able to take the next steps. I want to be able to put round pegs in round holes. No longer do I want to try to force square pegs into round holes. I want them to be competent, I want them to be educated, I want them to be well-grounded, I want them to be adults that embrace lifelong learning. For this reason, for this passion, for this dedication, I ask that you support me on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. And thank you, all the candidates. And please stick around, just we'll wrap it up, and then the candidates will be available at the table or elsewhere to have some conversations. I just want to take a quick minute because I appreciate the attention and, anyway, not the applause, which is probably tempting, but I'd really like to give all of these candidates, you know, they're putting their necks out, they're sacrificing their time. It's a bold step to step out to serve our community that we all love very much, so let's give all of them just a really big round of applause. And I think, Mr. Smythe will...
First of all, thank all of you for coming. We would hope to have had more people because we are afraid that's a reflection of the interest, and that's a problem for me. Having run for office, I know how tough it is to do what you guys do, and I applaud you, as John just noted. I want to thank our sponsors, Tom Britt and Hometown TV, Doug and his wife, June Lee, for letting us use us. And to be honest, John did a much better job than Abdul ever did. So let's give a hand for John. And thank you all, and thanks, and don't forget to vote if you would mind. Have a good evening.
Thanks. One more time.